I think, can everybody hear me okay? Excellent. Okay, we're gonna start the meeting for this evening. It is the City Council regular meeting. It is 6:35 PM on November 16th, 2021. And roll call, Lita.
Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malchow.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Gamblyn.
Present.
Councilmember Tom Odell. Councilmember Chris Ross. Oh, thank you, Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Thank you.
Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-28, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. The city is now using Zoom webinar and it hosts its public meetings. To join the Zoom webinar on the web, By telephone dial 253-215-8782 and enter the following webinar ID when prompted, To view live, the city website is www.samamish.us/tv21. The city YouTube or Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. To view later, the meeting videos are available the day after the meeting. Again, the city website is www.samamish.us/tv21. Our YouTube and Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. Pledge of Allegiance. You know what, let's have Deputy Mayor.
Trying to unmute myself, sorry. My flag is way over here, so you may not be able to hear me very well. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. First up is the approval of the agenda.
Come on, roll.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it for debate.
And discussion?
Yeah, I think we've been requested to remove an item. We were requested to remove item 17, so I'd maybe remove that.
Second.
Okay, hang on. Yep, I have that down. Okay. And do I have anything, any other changes to the agenda? Okay, seeing none. All the arrows and favor of the agenda as altered with the removal of number 17. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have 6-1. Okay, the first thing that we have is we have got, we've got a couple of special recognitions this evening. And the first one, Deputy Mayor, I'm gonna turn that over for you because it is for Councilmember Odell.
Now I gotta run tonight. Unfortunately, these are not actually on the agenda.
Pardon?
They're not actually on the agenda.
They are, it says recognition. Under special recognitions, it's on the agenda.
Oh, I see, sorry.
It's okay.
They're part of the agenda.
Can we do the other one first while I pull this up? Sorry, I apologize, but it's in email, so.
Well, the other one would be Councilmember Lambert. And we do not, is she online yet? Do we have her online? Okay, we do not have her online yet, so we may have to do her either later or at a different time.
I'm searching for this email because it came, and I just noted it late this afternoon, so apologies.
No, that's okay.
If somebody wants to fire it off to me really quick, so it's at the top of my inbox.
Okay, so you know what? Let's do public comment first and we can come back to it before we go into executive session.
That works.
Okay, let's do public comment. And pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-28, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. Written comment. Written public comment will be accepted until 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to thecityclerk@latchey@samamish.us and thecitycouncil@samamish.us. Verbal comment. Please join the Zoom meeting if you would like to give verbal public comment. Information on how to join, a list, join is listed under Meeting Accessibility at the top of this agenda. Up to three minutes of verbal public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. During public comment, the clerk, city clerk, and then I'm gonna turn this over to Lita.
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. For attendees who are joining by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. We have more than 10 commenters signed up right now. I will unmute callers in the order they have raised their hands. When it is your turn to speak, you will be converted to a panelist, be unmuted, and can turn on your webcam if desired. If you would like to speak at a public hearing, I will return you to the attendees and speak to you again when the council reaches that hearing. Please note that during the conversion from an attendee to a panelist, it will feel like you have been removed from the meeting. Please wait a few seconds and you will return. You will have three minutes to provide comment. 15 seconds before your three minutes is complete, I will provide a time warning. At three minutes, you will be muted and converted back to an attendee. Please start your comment by stating your name and the city you live in for the record. I will now unmute the first caller. The first caller is Lisa.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Glenn Kemp, Lisa's my wife. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my fellow residents of the 3100 through 3600 block of East Lake-Samamish Shore Lane Southeast in Samamish. This is a story about the street that Samamish forgot. Forgot to implement the repairs that were promised more than 20 years ago and even forgot that the city was responsible for maintaining the street. Our street was originally constructed on the site of the original Monahan Saw Mill in the early 1900s. Underneath the road surface are the waste products from the original mill, including wood chips and sawdust. Upon incorporation more than 20 years ago, a group of residents, several who still live on the street, addressed the original Samamish City Council about the condition of our road and were told that it was included in a five-year plan for road repairs. More than 20 years later, we're still waiting for the road repair project to begin. Since that time, we've been featured on the City of Samamish website as the example for the worst street in Samamish. Over the years, repairs have been made by the residents at their own expense, leaving a patchwork of undulating surfaces. Today, our street presents a safety hazard to runners, walkers, bikers, delivery and service vehicles, residential traffic, and homeowners. In addition, the road doesn't provide adequate protection for the utilities that run underneath, including gas, water, and sewer. The water line that services families has been cracked on several occasions over the past few years and repaired at owner's expense to ensure fresh water is provided by the pipe under the deteriorating road surface. Cost of road repairs keep increasing the longer it's delayed. What was once a project in the tens of thousands of dollars when it was first addressed with the City Council more than 20 years ago is now a project in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. The road continues to rapidly deteriorate with major depressions, potholes, cracks in the pavement, and five-inch-deep puddles when it rains. Chances of an accident, gas leak, or water disruption continue to escalate. We appreciate all the City Council members and candidates that visited with us over the past several months and shared a consensus opinion that our road was in dire need of repair. We ask that you approve the budget that should have been approved more than 20 years ago. The street that Samamish forgot is looking forward to its happy ending. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you for calling.
I will now unmute the second caller. Jennifer.
Hi, Jennifer Kim, I'm a resident of Samamish. And I would like to ask that the council keep Dave Rudat as our city manager. As you guys know, our city has undergone a lot of change over the last couple of years with city managers, which has not been easy for staff. And we finally have an experienced city manager that staff is comfortable working with, which we have not had in a really long time. My concern is that staff cannot do their job effectively if their leadership is constantly changing every two years. And what we really need in the city right now is stability for our staff to be able to do their jobs and to be able to actually implement the decisions that you as a council have made. And we need someone that they're not gonna have to start over from square one all over again. And Dave came on during one of the toughest times that our city has ever seen during COVID. And I think one of the things that I appreciate that he's done under his leadership is we have one of the highest vaccination rates in the state. I think it's like at 95%. So when making this decision, I ask that you please look at all the facts that have been presented objectively, both the positive and the negative, and to please look at the entire picture of how he has served his role so far. What are all the wins and progress that have occurred since he's been working here? And I don't believe that anyone should be judged on one action unless, of course, it's like a truly heinous crime. So I ask you to please consider two things when you're deciding today. Number one, what is gonna be in the best interest of staff? Like, how is this decision gonna affect their ability to do their jobs effectively for you and the city? And number two, what is in the best term, like, long-term interest of the residents who you said that you would serve? And whatever your personal interests are for yourself or for someone else, I ask that you please put this aside for this vote. And I hope that you will do what is in the residents' best interest. Thank you.
Thank you for calling.
I will now unmute the third caller. Paula.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Good evening, City Council. My name's Paula Harper Christensen. It is a pleasure to be on the other side of the election so we can continue to do our work in Samamish. As we prepare for Thanksgiving, I request again that our city gives a land acknowledgement for this land where we live and we thrive. We are on the indigenous land of the Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. May we thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial. I've requested several times and with respect, can we please open all meetings by making a land acknowledgement that is motivated by genuine respect for native peoples? Speaking and hearing words of recognition is an important step in creating respectful relationships with indigenous nations. Our city stretches across the traditional lands of Snoqualmie, Dewamish, and Stillaglamish peoples. Without them, we would not have access to this beautiful living environment that we all love so dearly. In Samamish, can we share our mutual humanity and work to stand up against racism, xenophobia, and antisemitism while modeling a continuous narrative for peace, gratitude, and friendships? In fact, our anti-racist work includes daily efforts to model a goal of all are welcome here. After the last election, particularly the seat that Kathy Lambert is vacating, partially due to the false racist, antisemitic material she approved and mailed out to King County District 3 regarding her opponent. It was fabricated, it was cruel, it was harmful. And even the Seattle Times said so. Because of these racist tactics, it looks like you're giving special recognition to Kathy Lambert for her service to her city. And for the record, I object to this special recognition. As we gather this Thanksgiving, may we hold authentic gratitude for the indigenous peoples, past, present, and future generations who are the rightful stewards of this land. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you for calling.
I will now unmute the fourth caller. Bill.
Greetings, my name is Bill Way. My address is 3451 East Lake-Samamish Shore Lane Northeast. I've been in Samamish since 1956 and on the board of Friends of Lake Samamish State Park. I gave a PowerPoint presentation through last July about the Comprehensive Trails Plan, sort of all volunteer effort that the state parks is gonna be adopting. State Parks has secured a $2.7 million loop tip of a grant to do a loop trail and a footbridge crossing Isicaw Creek. And Friends of Lake Samamish State Park has secured a grant for an entry road crosswalk and an 1,100-feet-of-year-around ADA trail. FLIPS now needs to secure nearly $200,000 in matching funds to make this $3 million project a reality. They've gotten commitments for $56,000 and are nearing our requirement to go forward with our little grant and are asking for $25,000 from the City of Samamish to put us over the top. Why should the City of Samamish invest in year-round ADA trails in Lake Samamish State Park? First, because Samamish residents use Lake Samamish State Park now and will do so even more later. Second, the plan is term-key and extremely cost-effective. Volunteers came up with a master plan. State Parks and FLIPS secured $3 million in grants. FLIPS will generate the match. So far, we've got City Visicaw, Mountain Sound Greenway, Lakeside Gravel, and Rowling. And we're excited about the possibility of you guys joining as well. Our request again is for $25,000. We are eternally grateful for the City of Samamish supporting FLIPS for its $10,000 yearly donation. Because of you, we have been able to develop a bathhouse, huge play structure, activities like ABP Beach Volleyball, Parkadilly Walkin' Way, and Camp Smores, and now this Comprehensive Trails Plan. The fruits of a one-time $25,000 donation will result in thousands of feet of year-round ADA trails and a new footbridge in Lake Samamish State Park. Thank you for your time.
I will now unmute the fifth caller. Jan.
Can you hear me?
I actually, I bumped Mr. James up too early, so it should be Jan and then John.
I double-checked the agenda, I think this is still on here.
So Jan Bird is our next commenter.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Good evening, City Council and staff. This is Jan Bird in Samamish, Washington. And I noticed on the upcoming schedule, you'll be voting on a landscaping contract at the regular meeting on December 7th. I just wanted to remind you of the difficulties we had with the current contractor, which is Brightview. At least we led at the E-Bright Creek Park. Some of you will remember the sword ferns that were pruned and the gumdrops, and we basically butchered the pruning job on the large western red cedar at the entrance to the park. And I think this is also the same contractor we had in 2020. I was working down in the lower commons with a couple other stewards and mentioning about this one particular plant that was in bed and just ready to bloom. I said, well, just wait till next week, it'll be beautiful. It's a nice pollinator plant. And we did our work reading. We could hear the landscapers were there with their equipment. And when we went to leave, we found they had weed whacked that beautiful plant down to the ground. So we had that fellow, the rider there. I keep probably wondering what crazy woman that was going after him. But if this is company is your only choice, then please make the contract include only cutting the grass, something where they can't do any damage. They should not be allowed to do any pruning. And on a whole different subject, I want to thank council again for a couple of years ago when you folks gave money so the stewards could have a native plant nursery over in the maintenance area at Beaver Lake Park. It's used actually by city staff as well. They held a lot of their plants for Big Rock Central over there. So it's really been a win-win. We've been able to have some volunteers salvage plants, keep them there in the nursery. Then when we need them, we can put them into the ground. So it's really been really a good use of, I think it might have been $50,000 to provide the wood to make the raised beds that the scouts did. And our volunteer Steve Markle did the irrigation system. You guys provided all the parts, did the shed. Really was a good use of taxpayer money, so thank you again.
Did he hang up? Well, I hope not.
I'll now promote the next caller. Could you do that, Lita? Okay.
Okay.
Mr. James.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
During that pause, I did check the agenda and it looks like the special recognitions are on there. That's why I'm even calling in. But my name is John James. I served as a former council member and I live in Sahale at 21603 Northeast 24th Street here in Samamish. My first comment is about our retiring City Council member, Tom Odell. And Tom actually holds my old position, number one. Good job. We started at the same time, but he gave more serving by taking on another term beyond me. So I was also a deputy mayor and because of Tom, I served as an active mayor, very, very briefly. But kind of known to having quick meetings. Even though we didn't see everything eye to eye, but we served civilly. I encouraged another person to fill out our former council member position. She wasn't selected, but we still had decent conversations. Next time, Tom, I would suggest he stay retired and enjoy his family if duty calls. I know somebody mentioned about Kathy Lambert. I don't know if she's gonna be joining us, but I'll mention her as the current King County Council member in District 3. I have known Kathy for years, since I started serving, and she is always willing to meet regardless what you represent or what you think. And I have known because of that, she is perhaps the hardest-working elected public servant in Washington, and that would be state, not Washington DC. And it was my pleasure to serve City Council and the Samamish residents. These are often thankless jobs, but I thank you on both before Thanksgiving as a holiday. And I'm sure the City of Samamish, King County, and the state of Washington appreciates your serving, everybody on the call tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
My pleasure.
Thank you, John.
I will now promote the seventh caller.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Jonas and I live at 23402 Northeast 29th Place in Samamish. I have been a Samamish resident for nearly all of my life. I grew up here before the city incorporated and now my kids are growing up here. Just over a year ago, I joined the board of Friends of Lake Samamish State Park and I currently serve as both the vice president and the chair of the Landscaping and Restoration Committee. I joined this organization because my family and I often use Lake Samamish State Park, as I know many other Samamish residents do. I fully support FLIPS's mission to improve the state park for all users and particularly for users in the off-season. Several of our board members spent hundreds of hours developing a new comprehensive trails plan for the park. And Bill Way, our Trails Committee Chair and a fellow Samamish resident, presented a summary of this plan to the council in July and also spoke tonight. This new plan is in the process of being adopted by state parks and when completed would improve the condition of trails in the off-season, make many of them ADA accessible, and add new trails to our system. We are asking the city for a grant of $25,000 to get us to our first benchmark so we can begin the design permitting and building of the first phase of this plan. FLIPS is incredibly thankful for your annual support of our organization of $10,000. It has helped us develop the Sunset Beach Bath House and All-Access Playground, which many Samamish families really enjoy, as well as host many successful events that are enjoyed by Samamish families, such as Parkadilly, Walkin' Wagon, and Camp Smore. A $25,000 grant for improvements to the park trail system will directly benefit the many Samamish residents who currently use the park's trails year-round and who will have better accessibility to the trails, both in terms of ADA accessibility and also connections made throughout the park and to the regional trails. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for calling.
I will now unmute the next caller. Paul.
Good evening, City Council. If you don't recognize me, I got my ears lowered today. I was turning into a hippie, anyway. Happy haircut. Today, I'm going to talk about some important, more serious things that need to be said. And tomorrow, I'm going to chat about more inspirational things that have a lot of feeling regarding the land use in the future of Sammamish, which to a large part is in play with the BLUMA EIS. Some of the more serious things, just a few key points. And I apologize to the public because I'm jumping into the deep end, but the council will easily follow this. I think that we, as a community, need to obtain lacking sufficient essential information to level set all growth direction and perspectives in our city. I feel that the current EIS aim should be repurposed to focus on school pickup and drop-off times and choke points outside the city. Third, I think a second, another EIS needs to be commissioned to study 40 years of housing misdevelopment in Sammamish to determine the right mix of housing for our community in sustainable ways to meet all needs over lifetimes of those that live and work in Sammamish. Next, there are many consequences tied to land use. I've turned some information in on 40 comprehensive consequences, and odds are there's a lot more. We need to see how those really compare and turn depending on which land use direction or for each of the directions, and then choose the one that the community wants most. Something we haven't had in our comp plan is, next is to set numbers for external targets on growth, which I'm sorry, that was misspoken. We do have that. But we need to set internal numbers. What's the right amount of different and diverse housing our community needs, and how are we going to get there? Next, once we determine desired cohesive unifying land uses that are inspiring and bring the community together, then we make changes to the comprehensive plan. And last, let's reap holistic civic enrichments in sustainable ways to improve livability, lifestyles, and legacies now and for generations to come. Have a fun meeting.
Thank you for calling.
We'll now unmute the ninth caller. This is a phone caller.
Hi, this is Mary Victor. I lived in Sammamish for over 20 years. And I did send in support for the mid-buy adjustments, including Lewis Thompson Road tightline. I hope with the $3,400,000 and potentially more money that we'll be getting, that this would move ahead so that they can do design in 2022 with construction in 2023 and '24. And I had emailed in about that. What I would like to speak to during the time that I have here for regular public comment is for the development regulations, Phase 2. First of all, some of the context-sensitive and best things to do for development, I'm not sure that they apply to single-family homes. I think they just apply to development. So I think a subset of that should be written so that we make sure people building single-family homes do context-sensitive development, looking at trees and critical areas and waterways, and what's the best use of land so that they're not doing excessive excavation. And then one of the concerns I have is there is current code on putting a notice on title. If someone has a critical area anywhere on their property, before any development is approved, those are supposed to be recorded. That has not been done or not at least consistently in the past, and I would like that format to be done better. I believe the current draft talks about critical areas affidavit, which is kind of a new idea that's simpler. But what we really need is people that have critical areas really do need to do the critical areas report, particularly if it covers either a large portion of the property or if it covers where they want to do the work, because maybe there's only a tiny portion of their property that's deep slope, but they want to do a whole bunch of cuts and excavations and that sort of thing. So I would really like it to stay with the critical areas report being required and that that would be looked at. And then the other topic I wanted to talk about is reasonable use exceptions. If someone has a lot, and there's a lot of them in Sammamish, that are, they're either smaller or fragments, or they're entirely constricted and constrained by one or more multiple critical areas, including erosion hazards, landslide hazards, deep slopes, or other types. A lot of these parcels or lots, they might exist, and they're much smaller than the existing area zoning would be. And when people buy those, a lot of times they can emit a cheaper price, and they're like, hey, I'll be able to build a great big house like everybody does. And then when they get into it, they have to do a reasonable use exception before they can even do a building permit. And a lot of times, there is very little footprint area where you could actually build a home, even if you do a lot of engineering for it. And people typically come in with the idea that they're
15 seconds.
They have the house in mind that they want. And I just think more work needs to get done here on reasonable use exceptions. So it was forwarded with recommendation for the planning commission to have some city council look a little bit deeper. And I don't have detailed input that I emailed. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary.
I will now unmute the 10th caller. James.
James Eastman, Sammamish, Washington. I was talking to my wife the other day about how I missed going to Seattle or the city council meetings. And she said, that's because when you give your public comment on the phone, they always hang up on you or cut you off after three minutes. When you go there in person, the mayor continually tells you to shut up, and you get the last word. And I thought, she's got a good point. So yeah, I missed the mayor having to cut me off after three minutes. But I do feel that public engagement is down somewhat. These development regulations with the storm art code and a few other things. Seems like input hasn't been where it's been in the past. Also, went to a Redmond City Council meeting a few months ago. So they're open. So I'd ask that the city open up the city council meetings for in-person. We have the ability to check vaccination status and see, you know, if people meet requirements to meet in a group, group setting. Also, I emailed in today, comments on development rags. I drove down Lake Sammamish Parkway this morning and probably drove past a few hundred homes, and most of them are within 25 to 40 feet of the parkway. And the new rags want 100 feet. So hard time understanding with that many homes already built, why you want us to go to 100 feet. And on that note, you have the NDA coming down the hillside there, and you don't want people to build there. You want to build by the parkway outside the NDA. So the two kind of contradict. There's nowhere in these new development rags that address that. I'd like to see that addressed. And then also, traditionally, the parkway has been neglected. We're going to improve it at one point in time. I decided it was too costly, so we created Table T8. And Table T8 was exposed, and then we decided we would just ignore the parkway from concurrency. And now we're saying in the new EIS that the 202 route will, improvements on Sahali Way will decrease ridership on the parkway by 400 vehicles an hour, which is preposterous in my view. So I'd like to see a plan on the parkway. What are we going to do? You know, are we actually going to do any improvements down there? And if we're not, then why are we so concerned about making sure homes are 100 feet off the parkway when there's very little land remaining? Thanks very much.
Thank you, James.
I will now unmute the 11th caller. Mike.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. This is Mike Scholes. I've dined or had drinks with everyone here but Pam, and maybe someday that could occur. Would be interesting. I've worked my butt off to get four of you elected. I deeply care about our city. And a few years ago, we brought Dave Rudat up from California to do a job. And he was our rock star, and he was going to be the guy that was going to finally give us some continuity and right the ship. And the very person who was instrumental in getting him hired is now trying to get him fired. And that's unconscionable. Anyone who follows politics in Sammamish knows that tonight's the night that Tom Odell is last night, and where there's a possible vote that fire Dave Rudat. Firing someone because of an individual who doesn't even live in our city anymore, who writes a blog, who has a tremendous influence on city council, is just unacceptable. Dave has been consistent. The chief of police, the fire chief, both are very happy with him. The staff is happy with him. The staff endorses him, and they feel secure with him, and the morale in the city has never been higher. I implore all of you to think very carefully about what your actions are in executive session tonight. Okay? Because of what I've done in my interactions with all of you, I probably have been privy to some things that I'm not, more, more things than I should have known. All of you are guilty of doing what Dave is being condemned for. Pam got censured for it, and a few of others could be as well. I really hope that you guys do the right thing tonight and keep continuity in our city and save us from a half a million dollar lawsuit that he's going to win. There's no way he would lose with the frivolous things that Tom Odell and Kristi Malchow are going to present in the executive session or wherever you guys are going to do, I don't know if it has to be on the dais, to, to get him out of here solely because someone who has a lot of control over you guys doesn't like you or doesn't like Dave. You know, it's just unfathomable that we're even at this point. Jennifer Kim brought it up earlier, that we know what's going on. We're not stupid. And it's just terrible that this is coming about. This guy came up from California. He didn't need to come up here. He's a
15 seconds.
All we do is fire city managers. Please, city council, let's give a city manager some time to work. And this is on you guys if you fire him. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now unmute the 12th caller. Sandra. Sandra. Sandra Marshall, you're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Maybe she could call back in.
We'll put her to an attendee and then bring her back up and see if it works. Okay, Sandra, you're back in as a panelist.
Sandra, are you on mute?
So this was our last caller. We're unable to hear anything, so I would just say, I guess we have to move on with, close the public comment. We'll, we'll proceed with the recognitions and then maybe we'll give, if Sandra can try to log back into the meeting, and then maybe we'll have audio.
Okay, so we're going to go backwards, and it looks like Councilmember Lambert, she wanted to come later. I'm going to see if we can't just reschedule her to either tomorrow or a different night. I, she may have gone someplace else first. So anyway, so let's go and let's, Kristi, if you want to take over, and we will work on the one for Tom Odell.
Yep, I am ready now.
Excellent.
So this evening is Councilmember Tom Odell's last regular council meeting, and we wanted to have the opportunity to thank him for his service to the city of Sammamish. Councilmember Odell came out of retirement this past March when he was appointed to a vacancy on the council that we had. Prior to that, he served two terms on the city council from 2009 until 2017 when he retired the first time. We recognize that serving on the council is a significant commitment, and Councilmember Odell stepped in right away this year, didn't miss a beat. And, you know, given that it was in a pandemic, it certainly adds a significant challenge to the job, and he's always stepped up to that task. As notable, he had a significant family medical issue that continues to play out, and he is still present this evening. So his dedication is unwavering to the city. So thank you, Councilmember Odell, for being willing to, to serve again. The city does have a small token of appreciation for your service, and you can pick that up in the council office when it is convenient for you. And I would like to turn this over to Councilmember Odell and ask if he would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Kristi. I will say a few words, and I hope it's a few because we've got a lot to do this evening. It was my pleasure to come back and to rejoin the city council in March when a vacancy occurred. I hope that the experience of my first two terms has helped with the current council in a number of areas. And I was delighted to be able to do it. I briefly toyed with the idea of actually running for another term, but my wife talked me out of it. So I am saying goodbye this evening. It's been a pleasure working with all of you. Sometimes we've been on the same page, sometimes we have not. But I admire all, everyone who is on the council with me and who has served with me in the past as well, like Councilmember James, who actually took council member James, who actually took over as mayor when I had a, a medical emergency of my own. Anyway, it's been great. This is a great city. There were something like 20,000 people in the entire plateau when we moved here in 1989. And there, there are now something north of 65,000 just within the city limits. And there's more outside. So we've come a long way with the city. It's a great place to live, was when we moved here, still is. And I would like for us all to keep it that way while adding stuff that people really do want added. And trying not to change the overall ambience of life here. So to me, that's important. My wife and I hope to stay here, so we'll be seeing you around. Thank you very much, it's been my honor.
Thank you, council member. Okay, with that, I think we will move council member Lambert to a different night. And the next thing that we actually have up on our agenda is executive session.
Can you make one more attempt with our?
Is she back up?
We'll, we'll make one more attempt here.
Okay, we are gonna try to pull up one, our caller, our last caller and see if we can. Okay, we're gonna try to pull up our last caller, so everybody hold tight.
Okay. Sandra, you've been promoted to panelist? And you can comment?
Madam Mayor, maybe we can make an exception and allow Sandra to submit a written statement past the 5:30 deadline since she's having technical issues?
Yeah, Lita, do you want to get in touch with her and let her, yeah, that'd be great, thank you. Great suggestion, council member. Okay. All right, next we have got our executive session. And it is for litigation, a potential litigation pursuant, tonight, pursuant to RCW 42311I to evaluate complaints or charges brought against a public officer or employee pursuant to RCW 42311F. So we have got the two items that are on here and how long are we thinking, folks?
I would say at least an hour.
An hour? Okay, so let's say it's 7:30, let's say we'll be back at 8:45. Okay, see you on the other side. This is Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, city council meeting. We will be extending our executive session. It is currently 9:50, we're gonna be extending our executive session till 9:30. I'm sorry, it's, it's 8:50, oops. We're gonna be extending executive session till 9:30. Again, today's date is Tuesday, November 16th, and we are extending executive session till 9:30 PM. Thank you. City council meeting on Tuesday, November 16th, 2021. We are in executive session, we'll be extending for a half an hour till 10:00 PM. Again, this is Tuesday, November 16th, 2021. We will be extending executive session till 10:00 PM. Thank you. Okay, councils, everybody back?
I'm here.
Okay, I believe we have everybody back with us.
We are here.
Okay. Okay, council, we are arriving back from executive session. And it is 10:07 PM. And I have hands up, council member Odell?
Actually, Pam had hers up first. I'm not sure why mine, maybe it's up?
I, I put my dad up to let you go first, Tom, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, madam mayor.
Okay.
I move to adopt a resolution providing notice to city manager of the council's intent to terminate his employment for cause and providing the city manager an opportunity to respond either orally or in writing within 30 days and to authorize outside legal counsel to draft a resolution and notice to the city manager pursuant to the city manager's employment agreement.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
May I speak to my motion, ma'am?
Go ahead.
Okay, just give me a second here. I make this motion because the city manager has failed to adequately protect sensitive city information from disclosure. He has failed to observe the ICMA Code of Ethics 3, tenet influence. And he's also basically not performed in a manner that reflects my willingness to have confidence in his abilities in the future. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this?
My hand up.
Council member Stewart?
Yeah, I support this motion. We've obviously been conducting this investigation for quite some time. And there's a pattern of behavior that is troubling. And I think council member Odell said it, there's a, there's a point after which there's a, there's a loss of confidence and trust. The failure to safeguard confidential information is a basic tenet of, of any employee. And most in particular, the person who holds the role of effectively the CEO of our city. There's other information that has come to light and it is our responsibility as a, as a council to make a decision based on the totality of information that we have received through the course of this investigation. An independent investigation, mind you. Someone from completely outside the city with no vested interest in anything other than discovering the truth.
Thank you.
Based on the preponderance of information that we have to make these decisions. And we have to do, as, as some members of the public phoned in and said, we have to make a decision that is in the best long-term interest of both our staff and our city and our residents.
Thank you. And you've based it on your opinion. Thank you.
I, I'm sorry, madam mayor, but I have the floor. Did you have a point of order or are you just interrupting me?
I guess I was just interrupting you. Go ahead.
Okay, well, that is, that is out of order.
It is, I apologize, go ahead.
It is not a light decision that a council makes in, in any of these decisions. It's not a light decision, it is not a personality contest. It is not personal, it is not any of those things.
Council member, can, I'm just asking you to make your.
You're interrupting me, yeah.
I'm no, I'm asking you to make your point.
I am making my point. I am speaking to the motion that I supported. Do you have anything else, madam mayor, or are you just going to keep interrupting me?
I'm asking you to make your point.
And how was I not making my point?
You're pontificating, that's not making a point.
I am not pontificating. We are about to make one of the most important decisions, a large decision, a big decision that impacts everyone. And I think that it is completely reasonable and fair that we all speak to whether we support or don't support such a motion. And that is absolutely speaking to the point, madam mayor. May I continue?
Go ahead.
Thank you. It is, as I just said, to the mayor, an incredibly difficult and important decision that we have to make. And we have to make it based on what we do believe is the, in the best interest of the city and the staff and the residents. And it is not an easy decision. And I, I think it's really important that everyone recognize that and realize that. There are many factors that go into this. And again, there's a pattern of behavior. There are many factors that have to be considered. There's a great deal of information that has been gathered. And so it is with a heavy heart and a difficult decision that is made. And I think it's really important that people know that. So, madam mayor, I have made my point. Thank you.
Thank you for your opinion. Okay, is there any?
I'm sorry, I'd like to, how, how do we make a point of order against the mayor?
Was that not your opinion?
It is, it is out of order for you to make commentary like that, madam. That it's completely out of order.
Was that not your opinion? I'm, I'm sorry.
Most of us make decisions as professionals and do it professionally.
Did anybody else want to speak to this motion? Pardon?
My hand is up.
Oh, I can't see it because it's that, it goes right next to the ceiling.
I'm sorry, it's a mirror color.
Yeah, that's okay. So deputy mayor?
Thank you. So I'm not going to be supporting the motion on the floor, which is for termination. The report that we received from the independent investigator said he failed to safeguard confidential information, but it did not specify whether it was passively or actively done. And to that end, I think an alternative reprimand is likely in order. But I'm going to take this opportunity based on the context of some of the public comment we received this evening as well as some of the somewhat horrendous emails that are coming in that I am not doing this vote because of what the public is saying about me specifically in this. I took a very independent eye on this investigation and am making my decision based on that alone. Thank you.
Okay. We need to extend the meeting. It is 10:15, folks, so.
Move to extend to midnight.
Second.
Okay, all of the, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of extending till midnight, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Ooh. Who, who were the nay? Raise your hands. Okay, just two. Tom Odell, were you a nay too?
I was a nay, I can't go midnight.
Okay, yeah, that's three of us, so we got three nays.
We got a budget.
Okay. Okay. And so my hand's up so I actually get to, to speak. And council member Stewart, I apologize, but I just wanted to speak to the fact that, you know, when it comes to everybody speaking their opinion. So please don't take that personal. When you have the floor, you are stating your opinion. So I wasn't, don't take that as an attack. It was, you were stating, you know, what you felt in your heart and, and how you're gonna vote and, and I, that, that's great. I, I, you know, I'm not saying that's good or that's bad, that's just, that's your opinion. That is how I would vote is based on my opinion on how I take things. So please don't take that as an attack, that's not meant to be an attack. I will be voting against this motion because it is against the spirit of any contract that we have with the city manager. And I believe that it is premature. And I believe that it goes against any information that we have to, to this date. So what we have, we are just starting to look at and, and requires an explanation. And so I will be voting against this motion. Next up is council member Stewart.
Thank you, mayor, for your opinion. We have facts. The independent investigator gathered facts. And there's a fact that the city manager failed to safeguard confidential information. It's a fact, it's not an opinion, it's a cold hard fact. And as council member Odell pointed out, that it is, that is in violation of, of the ICMA Code of Ethics. It is also in violation of terms in the city manager's contract which specifically say that he will follow the Sammamish Employee Handbook, which has information in there that specifically says that employees will safeguard information. And safeguarding information does not have to be an active task, meaning that you don't have to actively disclose something to fail to safeguard something. Failing to safeguard means that you were negligent or that you were, you know, you did not safeguard that information. You allowed it to be, to be discovered, heard, seen. And that is a failure to safeguard, which is different than an active disclosure. And so we have that information, we have that as a fact, it is not my opinion, it is the facts. Those are the facts. There are other facts as well. And I don't know how much we're allowed to really share from the report that we got. But there are other facts about the city manager not protecting himself from undue influence from external sources. There are also facts about the city manager engaging people who are not city employees to produce city work products. These are disturbing facts. These are facts that any employee who was found doing that should be terminated. And certainly the city manager, who should be held to at least that standard, if not higher. It is, it is a fairly minimum bar that those are all disconcerting actions, to say the least. Thank you.
Council member Gambler?
Yes, thank you, mayor. So I wouldn't be supporting this motion. First off, I, I feel the, the entire investigation was taken off on the wrong foot. I believe it was preemptive. I don't believe that the amount of discussion with the person that was being investigated was sufficient to even warrant the beginning of investigation. I don't live in a black and white world. I live in a world that things are not perfectly clear. And from what I've seen, preponderance of evidence may point to some lapses in judgment. May point to some things that during a very difficult time in our entire world, much less our country and our city, during COVID, in a new position, in a very stressful time, had there been perfect behavior, I don't think anybody here, anybody listening, would imagine an ability to have perfect behavior. So I, I, I don't think it rises nearly to the level of a termination at all. It, it, it's kind of laughable to me. But be that as it may, there's a motion on the floor. I would support it. And I, I think we live in a world of gray, not black and white. And in my opinion, the evidence points toward way, way lesser impact than a termination. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay, then I'm gonna call for the vote, but Lita, I'm gonna have you. And council member Odell, can you repeat your motion?
The motion language is motion to.
The motion language is motion to adopt a resolution providing notice to the city manager of the council's intent to terminate his employment for cause, and providing the city manager an opportunity to respond either orally or in writing within 30 days, and authorizing outside legal counsel to draft a resolution and notice to the city manager pursuant to the city manager's employment agreement. And Madam Mayor, I'd like to request a roll call.
Yes, that's what I asked her to do.
Mayor Karen Moran?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malcho?
Nay.
Councilmember Ken Gambly?
Nay.
Councilmember Tom Odell?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Ross?
Nay.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart?
Aye.
Councilmember Kent Trine?
Nay.
Two to five.
Okay, so that was a five-two vote. Motion does not pass. Okay, so... Looking for another motion, or we can move on? Okay. Then we can move on.
Well, I'll thank them.
Okay.
Go ahead, Chris.
I'm looking... Okay. I make a motion that we consider a up to 30-day suspension without pay in response, as punitive response to this incidence. And that the city manager has a couple weeks to respond, and a letter will be submitted to him from our outside attorney.
Second. Deputy Mayor, was that a second to that?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Ross, did you want to speak to that motion?
Sure. This is a situation where balancing the totality of the information and evidence provided, and I felt it fell short of termination. But however, at the same time, in instances like this, we should consider that some sanction is appropriate or potentially appropriate, given the facts and data that we collected. But it doesn't say we've lost confidence in the city manager. I think it gives us an opportunity to move forward positively. And that I think, at this point, he's a very talented individual with a lot of significant background. So I'm not ready to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think this gives an opportunity for us to work with the city manager for a positive going-forward relationship.
Okay, thank you. And, oh, Kristi, I can barely see that. You gotta change the color of that thing. Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. Yeah, I think Councilmember Ross spoke it well. And for those watching, this gives our city manager an opportunity to respond to counsel before final action is taken. So I think there'll be some dialogue. But I do want to offer an amendment for clarity to Councilmember Ross's original motion, which is that we provide the city manager an opportunity to respond either orally or in writing by November 30th, 2021.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. It's kind of shocking, really, having served on this council with the folks that I've served on, who have fired two other city managers-
Point of order. Sorry, Councilmember Stewart, I don't mean to cut you off, but this debate is now about the amendment, which is November 30th.
Fine. I have nothing to say about the amendment.
All the question.
All those in favor of the amendment, which is November 30th?
Yep.
Okay. Any other seeing none, calling for the vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. The amendment passes. Now we're back to the original motion.
We have terminated two city managers in the last three and a half years, two of which were for far less. And to say that we still have confidence in the city manager after not only the reports, but the information that we're seeing come in, the problem is likely not going away. And the fact that we would have to remind someone if they really are of such caliber and such expertise and such skill level, we wouldn't have to remind them to safeguard confidential information. That is a basic tenet of any employee in any- anywhere, particularly in government, but even in the public sector. It's basic. It's basic information. And the fact that we're having to have a discussion about that. And that is only one. I just want to call out that that is only one issue that was discovered and raised. Again, there is a pattern of behavior over a period of time, and there are multiple issues. And the fact that we also have evidence that the city manager lied to the investigator, that is concerning. And we have proof that the answers that he- at least one of the answers he gave was untrue, and we have proof to the contrary. And that should give everyone pause. And I don't know how you have confidence in someone after that. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands up. So I'm going to call for the vote. Again, I'm going to ask for a roll call. Councilmember Ross, please, again, repeat your motion.
Well, I didn't write it down, but I'll try to restate it. The motion is that we consider a sanction of a suspension up to 30 days, giving the city manager ample time to respond. And that was amended with November 30th, 2021. And that a letter will be drafted by our outside attorney, providing information to Mr. Rudat on the basis of this decision.
Mayor Moran? Doing the vote?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Malcho?
Aye.
Councilmember Gambly?
Aye.
Councilmember Odell?
Nay.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
Nay.
Councilmember Trine?
Nay.
Four to three.
Okay. Motion passes on a four to three.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make another motion.
Okay.
I move that Aaron Anton be appointed acting city manager for the duration of Dave Rudat's suspension.
Second.
They haven't decided on a suspension at this point in time.
Yes, we just did.
Until he responds, he's suspended, correct?
Member Gambly?
My understanding is that he was not suspended until he has a chance to respond.
That's correct.
Let's word that.
That was my understanding.
We got heads nodding and heads shaking. Is there an attorney?
Yeah.
Clarified?
Councilmember Trine?
I thought that it was that there would be a notification sent, and that there'd be time to respond. Did I misunderstand the mode?
Yeah, we're trying to get out, trying to see if- is Lisa on? Ah, there you are.
You're on there, Lisa.
There I am. I'm here.
So here's the question. The motion was made that we were going to look into the possibility of a sanction of up to- could be up to 30 days. But Dave would have- and notice would be sent to Dave. And he would have the opportunity to respond.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. So now Councilmember Odell- so the question is, is-
I withdraw the motion, given the answer from the attorney.
I think we need to get the answer from Lisa, though.
We do.
My understanding of the way the statute works is that once you've provided notice to the city manager, he does have an opportunity to respond to the allegations.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I withdraw the motion.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move forward. Next up on our agenda this evening is the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I am going to drop off. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next up on the agenda is the consent calendar. I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second. I think we need to remove the two items for the pay increases. I think we need to do the budget and pass those with the budget. So it's the item nine and item 10.
Okay, so you want to remove nine and- you want to remove nine and 10?
Yep. I think they need to be done with the budget.
Okay, so I'm going to remove items nine and items nine and 10. Okay, so... So I'm looking at approving the consent calendar minus items nine and 10. Any other?
I moved.
Okay. Any other? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes.
Did you want to remove something else, Councilmember Trine, from the consent?
No, I wouldn't have removed anything from the consent agenda. But thank you for asking.
Okay, next up, we've got presentations, proclamations. And it is Small Business Saturday, one of my favorites. And Councilmember Trine, since I know this is one of your favorites, would you like to read this proclamation?
Proclamation for Small Business Saturday. Whereas the government of Sammamish, Washington, celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the United States, responsible for 64.9% of the net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas small business employee, 47.1% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, 88% of the U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic. And 92% of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas 97% of Small Business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small, 85% of them also encourage family and friends to do so, too. And whereas 56% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in 2020. And more than 50% of consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media or shopped at local businesses because of a social media recommendation. And whereas Sammamish, Washington supports our local businesses that creates jobs, boosts our local economy, and preserves our communities. And whereas advocate groups, as well as public and private organization across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, the Mayor, Karen Moran of Sammamish, on behalf of the Sammamish City Council, do hereby proclaim November 27th, 2021, as Small Business Saturday. And we urge the residents of our community and the communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday throughout the year. Thank you. Here, here, nicely done.
Yes. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have got two public hearings this evening. And so the first up is going to be our public hearing, Amending Ordinance 02021-530. It is the city biennial budget for the purpose of revising the biennial budget. And first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to open the public hearing for the biennial budget. And then I'm going to turn this over to Aaron.
Well, Mayor, let me open it.
Okay. I'm going to turn it over to our city manager.
We have the Finance Director, Assistant City Manager, Aaron Anton, and his team is going to present and take us through what they, staff, and I have been revising since the last meeting. Staff have provided you the staffing numbers by quarters from 2019 to 2021 in September. We have reduced the budget request by nearly $2.8 million, as you asked us to go back and scrub the accounts, which Aaron will review for us. The numbers presented in the slides will show the adjustments without a tax increase and with a tax increase to help you understand that hurdle. But we won't be deciding on the tax issue with this public hearing. It is the next one. And Aaron will explain by statute why we need to do that. You can continue to work on the budget into December if you choose. But the numbers presented in the slides will show those adjustments with and without the tax increase recommendation. Please keep in mind that the recommendation of the tax increase was presented last fall when the council decided on taking half the bank capacity. And was still- there was still a structural deficit at which we reduced expenditures. It anticipated that we'd have to address that bank's capacity at the mid-buy. And that's why it's in here. So let me turn it over to Aaron and his team. And thank you very much. Go ahead, Aaron.
Aaron Anton, Assistant City Manager, Finance Director, here. And we're pulling up the PowerPoint. Erin Anton, Assistant City Manager, Finance Director, here, and we're pulling up the PowerPoint. Okay, we're looking at the 2122 budget modification. It's November 16, 2022, or 2021. Just a reminder for council of the current 2022 budget, so this is the adopted budget as we currently have in place, and you can see the ending fund balance picture as well as the beginning revenues and expenditure columns. This is for all our city funds that we have currently adopted in the 2022 budget. Again, as a reminder, this was adopted in June, June 15, 2021 is the last time that the 2022 budget was, was looked at and put in place in the way of an adoption. So that's just a reminder of what we currently have prior to any modification occurring. So let's zero in on the general fund line specifically, so looking at the June numbers in the revised budget for the general fund, if you look at the revenue picture of the 48.1 million and expenditures of 53.36 million, you'll notice that there is a 5.2 million gap in those figures, and so we have a fiscal sustainability goal to address that structural imbalance, and so that's what we're hoping to do with the modification is to close that gap and move towards addressing that structural imbalance. So the first set of adjustments that are part of the mid-buy modification are on the revenue side, and so this slide lists all of the different categories of revenue that are being updated for the forecast on revenue for the 2022 period in the general fund. So this is just looking at the general fund only again, and so you have the first two lines, the property tax, that's the regular property tax levy of 1%, the property tax remaining, bank capacity and those amounts, and then sales tax, criminal justice portion of sales tax, the federal grant for the 228th overlay project, and then all other adjustments to the revenue forecast, total revenue forecast updating $3.667 million. And then on November 1, council also looked at some additional requests that are included in the expenditure side of the budget, so just wanted to confirm that those are in the packet materials for the 16th as we sit here tonight. The Climate Action Committee, $25,000 there, and the Friends of Lake Sammamish State Park, $25,000, so those are included in the mid-buy expenditure requests. So we've covered the revenue side, this is the expenditure side of the mid-buy update. So the general fund expenditure adjustments are now, as of November 16, $1,663,574, and the, there, all of those detailed line items are included in the packet for the November 16th for tonight's meeting, so it has all the line item details. There's also a summary sent out for council of those different types of expenditures that are occurring within the general fund. An additional note on those, the modification summary that was sent out reflects $920,200 of that 1.66 million increase is related to personnel additions, so those were the 3.6 FTE and three contracted LTE city employees that were located in the general fund. So that's just a portion of those, those personnel costs that are in the general fund, so that's what that is detailing out. There was some discussion regarding vacancies and turnover citywide, so that, that additional information was provided to council as well, doing a look back over the past two years since 2019, and noting the 67 of those positions were vacant in that two-year period. Taking the revenues and expenditures into consideration, the net increase to fund balance then is 2,003,769 is the total dollar amount increase to fund balance that would result from the budget modification inputs that are being considered. So looking at how does that interact with the property tax levy for 2022 specifically, so you would note that previously when we're looking at that revenue picture, we, what was considered in the budget package was the 1% and the bank capacity. So this is just a repeat of those numbers, so the first line is the 5.2 gap that we currently have in the June 2021 budget for 2022. The second line is the net of both revenues and expenditure inputs that were being requested, so the net impact is an increase in fund balance of 2 million, so that closes that gap, but there still is a gap of 3.2 million. And then this, next three lines are showing and identifying if the 1% is taken out of the budget and if the bank capacity is taken out. So if you reduce that 300,000 related to the 1%, and if you reduce the 1.2 million related to the bank capacity, then the gap would grow to 4.7 million from what is currently showing in the budget packet. So that's all related to general fund, then we're going to go through the other funds and what's happening in those as major items for the, the different other funds that are remaining besides the general fund. So on the capital side, expenditure update, again, conversation that happened on November 1, there was a transfer of 5.32 million, previously this was a loan, so this is now a transfer, 5.32 million from the general fund to the transportation capital fund, so that's being rolled in. The second item is for the Fire Station 82 design, and that was moving out of the budget window, moving construction to 2023, and so that reallocated the capital budget savings within the 301 capital fund, and now that's able to be used for the security camera project, 230,000 of some of that savings is, is being allocated towards that, which does eliminate the need to transfer from the general fund over to that capital fund. So that's how it was able to help out there. The other capital adjustment there is reallocation in the 340 Transportation Capital Fund, and that was 800,000 related to the East Lake Shore Lane Road project. So that is now entirely located in the 340 capital fund, and again, the transfer from the general fund was then not necessary as the 340 fund was reallocated. So those are the capital adjustments. The next category is the surface water management funds. Those are funds number 408 and 438. As a reminder, these are the separate proprietary funds of the city, and so the 600,000 operating expense increase in the operating side of the 408 fund is related to the MPDES compliance activities, so those are associated with those compliance requirements. And additional note, when we're talking about the surface water management utility, those are covered by surface water management rates, so the rate revenue is what addresses those particular needs both on the operating and capital side within that separate utility fund as opposed to property taxes, for example. So the, the Surface Water Management Capital Project, the largest one that's occurring in that utility fund is the Lewis Thompson Tight Line Project, and that's covered by both a stormwater grant and stormwater rate revenues that are being transferred from the operating fund into the capital fund, so it's all contained within those two funds, the 408 and the 438. There are, there is another adjustment related to the American Recovery Plan Act. Again, this is a budget entry, it's for the second tranche of the federal ARPA funds in 202022, and that's the amount, the 2.379 million dollars, and so the budget entries are, are necessary to recognize the receipt of their funds and authorize spending the funds on the expenditure side. The city council can still decide how the funds will be spent at a later time. This budget, the budget entry that's being entered authorized the general spending of the funds, it doesn't restrict to a specific purpose within those, that council can designate that later. So given all of that, the, the total picture for the, the toll, the total proposed 2022 budget as revised now shows those ending fund balance in the general fund of 29.2 million and in total 60.448 million for all funds. So those are the two high-level ending fund balance numbers that would result after all of these adjustments that are currently shown would be incorporated. An additional note there that I'm connecting is recognition of the management partners' work. Of course, this is, we're just focusing at, on the 2022 budget tonight, but that does have a longer-term impact, and so the work that they've done to forecast in the future is something that we would continue to look at and utilize as we look into capital infrastructure financing needs and how we go about using the fund balances in the future.
Councilmember Stewart, did you have a question that, for, that can wait till the end, or did you want to ask it right now?
It can wait till the end, thanks.
Okay.
So that brings us to the public hearings, so there's two public hearings tonight, one's on the proposed budget modification, and then the second is on the 2022 property tax levy itself. So both of those public hearings are occurring. The property tax, some notes on that particular, following the public hearing, any proposed action, there is a deadline requirement that the King County Assessor has of November 30, so there is action that's needed by council prior to that date in order to meet their deadline for submitting whatever the property tax is that we want to have put in place for 2022. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor, for the public hearings.
Okay, so first thing we're going to do is we're going to see if we have anybody from the public that needs, that wants to speak.
If you wish to provide comment, please raise your hand. For attendees who are joining by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. We have two callers so far who have raised their hands to provide comment at this public hearing. I will unmute callers in the order they have raised their hands. You will be converted to a panelist, and you can turn on your webcam if desired. You will then have three minutes to provide comment, 15 seconds before your three minutes is complete. I will provide a time warning, at three minutes you will be muted and converted back to an attendee. Please start your comment by stating your name and the city you live in for the record. So now we have three people who have raised their hands. I will start with the first caller. The first caller is Heather Murphy-Rains. Heather, you're muted currently.
Whoever the meeting host is, they should be able to unmute her.
Looks like she dropped off.
Okay, well, we'll now unmute the next person on the list. Jan Bird.
Hello, can folks hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. This is Jan Bird again from Sammamish, and I make this comment on behalf of the Sammamish stewards, who are your volunteers doing restoration work in the city parks and stormwater ponds. And this is basically a follow-up to the comments we made on October 19. We agree with councilmember Odell that hiring an arborist should be a priority sooner rather than later. We hope it's still in the revised budget, although I haven't been able to find it, perhaps it's going by a different name than arborists. Anyway, we also hope that the community development gets its added code compliance person, as you can have the best tree and development code in the world, but if you don't have sufficient staff to enforce it, it's not effective in reaching the community's environmental goals. So that's, that's a good thing. We're thrilled to see the full-time permanent position for the restoration specialist still in the budget, and we fully support it, with expanded parks and restoration areas, this position's expertise is essential. Also, this position will likely be a key position as we go forward with the Urban Forestry Management Plan, an important part of that interdisciplinary team will be carrying it out. Our next concern, which we've mentioned previously, was a need for our natural areas crew to work in the natural areas of our parks that aren't the steward restoration areas, and as you are aware, our contractual landscapers are not doing a good job, at least they worked at Ebra Creek Park. Although it does not appear anything's been added to the budget from what I can tell to address this issue, we're hoping you can appoint one staff person to focus on the natural areas of the parks with the assistance of experienced volunteers several times a year. Perhaps you still could hire an AmeriCorps, Washington Conservation Corps, Earth Corps, some other type of person to work with them somewhere down the road. Eventually, we really ought to consider becoming a green city with Forterra as part of the Urban Forestry Management Plan to work with city staff and volunteers to maintain the natural areas, but we realize that's not in the cards for right now. We also see there's a budget added for the Sammamish Commons Trail Connection, once again, we fully support that. We also support the budget for the park's wayfinding system, and as we've mentioned before, a lot of people, after 10 years or so, the Lower Commons, they still don't know we have a native plant garden, so if we have an actual sign within the parks of people where no things are, that would be a good thing. We recently had some in the Lower Commons working in the garden, and had a family member come up to us and said, well, where's the playground in this park? We heard there's a playground, so having those kinds of signs internally in the park would be a really good idea. We weren't, I wasn't aware about what the grant was for the Friends of Lake Sammamish.
15 seconds.
But we certainly support that for the improvement of ADA trails at Lake Sammamish. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jan.
The next caller is a phone caller.
Hi, this is Mary Lipter, I'm in Sammamish. I'm speaking tonight for the mid-buy budget revisions. I hope that council will fully support the Lewis Thompson Road Tight Line Project. It's necessary truly because there's been so much development using older stormwater regulations, and even after the city of Sammamish was incorporated in 99, numerous houses were permitted and approved using 1998 adopted stormwater code as infill development on existing lots, and there's also multiple environmentally sensitive critical areas present. In the most recent basin plan, which was adopted for this Accra Basin Plan, the city, which the city did in June of 2019, staff and the consultants used council-created and adopted policy and prioritization rankings for stormwater CIPs, and the Lewis Thompson Road Project is the most critical and highest ranked. I wanted to give a very generous thanks to you as council for having chosen to list the Lewis Thompson Road Tight Line Project as the number one stormwater project for your top legislative priorities for 2021. Congratulations to you and the city for being awarded the $3 million grant from House Bill 1080 for the ARPA fund from the US Treasury. The city staff indicates that there is a 3% administrative fee for Washington to state to administer that, but the city of Sammamish will be receiving $2,910,000. Therefore, the city biennial budget allocates 2.3 million, 2,356,500, as has been communicated and specified by city staff, Director of Public Works Jeff Alkeshen, multiple meetings... Therefore, the city biennial budget allocates $2.3 million, $2,356,500, as has been communicated and specified by city staff, Director of Public Works Jeff Alkeshen, multiple meetings for council. The design for this project is slated to occur in 2022 and it will be construction in '23, '24. Grant monies always have a limited time to use. I'm glad that you accepted the $400,000 King County Flood District Control grant also, because that will pay for about half of the design costs. And there is another $192,942 additionally that has been applied for through the staff information. So thank you for looking after this project and I hope that you will be able to pass the budget to get this going with all the funds that are available. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary.
That's all for public hearing comments. Back over to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we're going to go back to council, so that takes us to Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you. So a number of questions. Erin, the, the original slide you put up where you show us the budget as of June, I believe it was Councilmember Ross who very astutely asked that we look at the actuals, you know, as of end of September or end of October actuals before making any budget choices, because as the consultants who came in and did our financial model pointed out, we have a tendency to overestimate our expenses and underestimate our revenues on an annual basis. And so before we start saying we have to raise taxes to cover our costs, we should actually understand where we are. So if you could put that first slide back up, is that actual, is that just the budget numbers? Are there any actuals in there so we know how we're actually trending? So is that just the adjusted budget or are those adjusted actuals as of June 15?
We don't hear you, Erin.
So this is the current 2022 budget.
So these are just budgeted numbers. There are no actuals here, correct? You haven't true anything up based on actuals?
That's correct.
So Councilmember Ross had asked that we do that, because again, historically, we tend to overestimate our expenditures and underestimate our revenues. So before we make decisions to raise taxes, we may not need to, because we, we may actually be in a much better financial position than we think we are. Can you speak to that?
So the, I'm, am I coming through here? I have an echo.
You have an echo.
So. Click on this little button here, this one. That's just a.
The little arrow.
Here?
No.
The little arrow.
Leave computer audio.
Test, test. See if that works. Are you hearing me okay? All right. So the actuals would be in the 2021 estimate to reduce the requests. So that's where that information was gathered when we were looking at the difference between the prior October set of numbers and the November 1st direction from council to go back and look at for the actual activity during 2021 that would lend itself to inform the 2022 need. So that's how the, the need got shrunk, is by looking and doing that review. So actuals.
Shared any of that information with us, have you?
So what you're seeing is the new set of requests.
Erin, we're actually not seeing anything. Your screen's not being shared right now.
So I'm getting to the, so this total increase, the $1.66 million, that's as of November 16th. So that came down from the, the prior November 1st number because of a review of those actuals from 2021.
So what was adjusted? Because I know we found like, I think, $2 million in parks things, you know, that were planned but aren't going to happen. So is there a summary of that somewhere, of all the things you found and what the number was and what it came down to?
Right. So in the email that was sent to council, there's, the previous request was $4,551,354. So that's what we reviewed on November 1st as the expenditure. And then the reduction was $2,887,780. And that was reduced, the reduced request. So then the, I'm just speaking to expenditures. And so the net expenditure is the 1,663,574 that is now part of the November 16th package. So it did go down 2.88 million from the prior November mid-by-adjustment expenditure request.
And Erin, do you have all the details of all the things that you guys found that brought that down in that, in that email? Or is it just the summary number?
The summary number is in there. All the details are available too. I mean, we went through each of the line items to pull down that. So this is all the departments submitting their, their scrub of that.
And then what about our revenue numbers? Because they are often underestimated in our budgets.
Yeah, so the revenue numbers are the ones that were showing the 3 million increase. So this 3,667,343. So we're updating the revenue forecast. So I'll point to the sales tax number there, the 406,000. So that's an updated forecast for 2022 revenues based off activity that we're experiencing in 2021. So we're increasing what the expectation is, the forecasted revenues in 2022, for example.
And the only increase in revenues, we think, is going to be sales tax, nothing else?
It's the sales tax, local criminal justice sales tax. There were a combination of smaller revenues that are adding up to that 109,218 that's showing on this slide.
Okay. All right. And in the general fund, where we show the $5 million deficit in the general fund, how much of that is capital spending? Because we talk about, you know, how we have an operational deficit, but part of our challenge is that we keep pulling money out of the general fund to pay for capital projects. And so we, we need to stop mixing our modes, right? Because we're using recurring funds like, like our property tax to pay for capital projects, which, again, Councilmember Ross has taught me well, we're supposed to really have our recurring revenues should be paying for our recurring charges. And we should look at capital expenditures separately. And certainly, if we have a surplus of, of recurring revenues, we can apply those to capital projects if we want to. But we really need to understand that operational picture and what the real operational budget is and what our, those recurring revenues are to understand if we have a deficit there. So can you help us understand that a little bit better?
Yeah, so the, the adjustments that were made on the capital side, so I'm going to skip forward to the capital expenditure adjustments. So there was a, a loan that was previously in place, then that converted to a transfer. So that was using some of the fund balance from the general fund in 2021. That was a 2021 action that, that flows through the beginning.
There's the $5 million deficit right there.
Yeah, so that's a 2020, right. So it's hitting the fund balance. So that's, that's how that one flows through. There was also the fire station design. So we're moving and reallocating the capital budget as a result of the movement of that capital project from the 2022 to the 2023 period.
And how much was that? How much was that construction project move, that we moved out?
It was a little over $2 million.
So see, this is where I get confused, because you said that we found the savings of like 2.8 million, but this one was over 2 million and we had 2 million in parks spending that I know we've deferred beyond the, the biennial budget. So quick math says that's 4 million of deferred expenditures. So I'm confused why the number only was adjusted by 2.8 million when we know we have at least 4 million just in those two projects alone.
Right. So the 2.8 million is just the general fund. So what this, referring to the fire station, these are the capital funds. So it's a different category. So the, what happened that's related, so the string between the, the general fund and the capital fund was that transfer. So there was a transfer that was originally in there in October, when we were transferring 230,000 out of the general fund to the 301 capital fund to pay for the security camera project. Then an additional transfer of 800,000 was going from the general fund into the transportation capital fund to pay for the East Lake Shore Lane Road project. So what's now being done after November 1st is that million, the 230,800,000, is no longer transferring out of the general fund into the capital fund, because we've reallocated within the capital funds themselves, eliminating the need to transfer from the general fund over there for those two items.
Is there any of that 4 point, whatever it was, 3 to 4.8 million, that we could somehow reallocate to, from, for the transportation transfer that we did? Because again, we're, we're saving money in capital funds, but we're still pulling from the general fund to pay for capital projects.
Right. So the, the transfer for the, the capital, the 5.32 million you're talking about, going into the transportation capital? Yeah, so the plan for that one was for the utility reimbursements to pay for that.
I know, but that's not happening.
So that's the budget plan going forward in 2022, is to pay for those. So that's how it would, would eat into that 5.32 million transfer.
Okay. The ARPA, the ARPA funds, I'm still, I'm still concerned that we're, we're logging an expenditure for that money when we already know, again, that we have millions of dollars of things that we can spend it on. So what I'm trying to get at, Erin, is we're, we're going to ask our residents, we're going to max out our, our property tax here.
It has as a revenue.
I'm sorry? What was that?
My apologies, Councilmember Stewart, because my mic should have been muted, but I just commented that it's also counted as a revenue.
It's also what kind of revenue?
It's a revenue and it's allocated or appropriated as an expense so that you can spend it.
I understand that.
I'll let Erin explain.
So we have over $2 million coming in from ARPA that we should allocate to one of our expenditures as opposed to logging a placeholder expense, because that's artificially inflating our expenses and making it look like we need more revenue when we really don't. And that's my concern. And if we're going to add, if we're going to raise taxes, we're going to max out our property tax, we sure as heck better be sure that we need that additional revenue. And then my final concern is that the request we had on personnel vacancies was not to see an overarching number, but for the current vacancies that we have, how long has each one of those positions been vacant? So it wasn't to say, over the last two years, how many positions have been vacant. It was for the current vacancies, how many of those have been vacant for, you know, more than six months or longer? So again, before we add additional budget and raise taxes to cover that additional expense for new personnel, we may be able to reallocate some of those positions, because it's unlikely that they're going to get filled. And so I just want to understand that. And I guess I'd like to understand, just in general, over the, this two-year period, what's going to be the, the change in, in the, the general fund ending balance? So it was, at the start of the biennium, it was what and what do we project it to be at this point? So it's going to go down by 10 million? Is that what I'm reading here?
So this is the final ending fund balance picture after the modification inputs are put into the budget document itself for 2022. And the transfers.
Again, argue that, that ending fund balance will actually be 2.37 or 3.8 million higher, because that, that expense that you're showing there is artificial. We will allocate those funds to a current expense, most likely. We're not going to invent a new one. Or we shouldn't. I mean, why wouldn't we just, since we have these ARPA funds coming in, why wouldn't we allocate them to some of our current projects as opposed to saying we need to raise revenue to cover those?
Pam, this is Chris. We have an equal amount of revenue, so it's really zero effect. If we don't budget the expenditures, you can't spend the money.
But we already have expenditures that need the money, right? We could allocate that to the transportation budget. We could allocate that to Lewis Thompson Hill project. Can't we allocate those ARPA funds to those expenses?
You could do that, but you can't spend them at all unless they're in the budget. You have to have budget authority to spend them on anything.
Okay. Well, we can authorize you, but we don't have to show an additional 2.379 million expenditures, because we already have more than that that we want to go spend that money on.
I don't know how else to explain it, except we're going to get revenues of 2.379 and we have to have expenditure authorization to spend it.
Okay. So are we going to be able to get that personnel information so we know for the current vacancies, how long has each one of those specific positions been vacant?
We have, currently have seven and three-quarter positions that have been vacant six months or more.
Okay. And how many new positions are we asking for? Okay, thanks. That's it.
First observation, really nice job on this, Erin and team. You tightened up all the accounts that we asked you to do and assess, and I see that in this result. If we took away the, the 1% in bank capacity, still reduce the, the net revenue or net by 500,000 or 600,000, that range, which is also good. I am supportive of the property tax, because I do see that we still have a, whether it be near-term or longer-term structural deficit on operations. In particular, I'm looking at the COVID revenue for 1.5 million, which is non-recurring. So in future budgets, we're not going to have that and we got to replace that revenue or reduce our expenses to cover that non-recurring revenue item in our operations. So that, for that reason, I think I'm comfortable with the proposal with the bank capacity. As I mentioned last time, I was concerned about the headcount underruns for the last 11 quarters, starting with 2019. Open positions were 26 in the first quarter of 2019. In the first quarter of 2020 is 17.5 open positions and we're currently about 18, just over 18, open positions. I just heard that seven have been open more than six months. I do know, and then upon reflection, I do realize a budget has to have a integrated set of assumptions. I can't merely say, recommend you chop X amount of heads off this budget unless you dealt with the corresponding financial impact to those heads. So I, I'm kind of leaning towards suggesting doing the same thing we would did last time, is have a cap where the city managers authorize up to a certain point, I think it's like a 130 range. And then anything after that would be, come back to council, justify those additional hires. where the city managers authorize up to a certain point, I think it's like a 130 range. And then anything after that would be, come back to council, justify those additional hires. It helps stay in line with union job descriptions, et cetera. Make sure it still keeps the flexibility, keeps the integrated budget. So I'm, I, we may, I may recommend maybe I make a motion. I want to hear more of what others think about that, of a cap, or if that achieves anything to help control our underruns on labor or deal with our underruns and labor. And it also allows us to be more flexible and nimble if we have revenue shortfalls so that we can work through that together. I'm very happy to see the the capital project for the East East Lake Shoreline Road project, absolutely keep that in. That's long overdue and I'm very pleased we allocated 800,000 for that. On the manager partners' financial modeling work, that's that's a critical project. And I guess the question, Aaron, is, or Chris, is how's that? How's that tie to the new requirements, that federal reward we get every single year? That now they're, I think, as I understand, they're expanding the requirement to include multi-year budgeting. Is this timed right to make sure we don't lose a beat or lose a year of recognition? Or are all cities migrating us at a pace that maybe they'll tolerate less than full implementation for a certain period of time and still recognize the outstanding cities for financial management, the federal award? So that's a question.
Yeah, the GFOA award is still eligible on a two-year basis because we're an established biennial budget. So that biennial budget award that we would be eligible for, the GFOA, would still be okay. The recommendation that GFOA has for best practices is for a six-year outlook. And so that six-year outlook is what the model would go. It would do at least that as a minimum. It actually looks out longer than six years, but it, the six-year minimum, this is a forecast, looking forward outlook, would be met with that model.
Okay, so we're on, we're on schedule to meet that demand and be right in front of it. So that's, that sounds really good. Thanks, Aaron.
Okay, and before we go any further on this, I meant to do this with Councilmember Stewart after she asked her question, but we need to, I'm going to close the public hearing so we can continue on with our deliberation on this. I meant to do that after Councilmember Stewart. So I'm closing the public hearing. And this is on amending the ordinance of 02021-530. And we will continue on with deliberation on this. And this is, now we're on to Councilmember Treen.
So clarifying question, I believe Councilmember Ross, you you mentioned a number of 130. And if it were to go over that 130, then the city manager would come back to the council. Are you, is that number 130 total FTEs? Or that's employees, right? The 130 employees for the city?
Mayor, can I respond to the question?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, my, the full-time equivalent plan, I think it's now with the five extras, going to goose up to about 139. And so we're, we're running 118 right now and I think our current cap is 130 FTEs. So it would be when, when, when the 131st, in the current scenario, 131st hire, you'd come to the council, hey, I want to fill this position, this is why it's important, go for it. I think it'd probably be more like a rubber stamp. It also gives us an opportunity and flexibility to address our headcount needs and really do, you know, regular analysis on those underruns that are perpetual for at least the last 11 quarters I looked at.
Thank you, Councilmember Ross. With with that information in the presentation provided by staff, I I move that the council approve the city manager's proposed adjustments to the city's 2021, 2022 biannual budget and that we add that if we hit 130 total FTE, that the city manager comes back to the council for approval of additional hiring.
I'll second that.
And and I too, I'd like to speak to my motion if you don't mind.
No, go ahead, speak to your motion, please.
I, I just really first want to thank Chris Ross for his leadership on this subject matter. I also wanted to thank Chris and Aaron for all the hard work that they've been doing. And then a big shout out to the, to all the directors for just scrubbing and looking for ways in which they can get a little leaner and a little meaner. Well, maybe not meaner, but just, you know, getting lean and being able to say, hey, this is, I'm willing to make this sacrifice to make Sammamish a better place and being fiscally responsible as we're making this this adjustment in the way that we do accounting at the, for the city. So I want to just thank everybody for the hard work and appreciate the leadership of the city manager as well. Thank you.
Okay, I second that. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, as far as the budget's concerned, I am supportive of the Lewis Thompson project. I'm supportive of the money for the Climate Action Committee, particularly as defined by the students who sent in the resolution, which would be an overall environmental committee with two slots for students. I'm supportive of the 25,000 for the Friends of Lake Sammamish. I am supportive of the Arborist. But I, I'm really, really struggling with increasing taxes. I'd like to see us amend this budget to take that 2.38 million that we're getting from ARPA funds and assign that to some of these projects and see how that changes the numbers because I don't think we need to max out our property tax increases. And I'm also still a little bit confused. I know David walked us through why he needs more staff, but we're talking about permitting only another 700 housing units over the next 30 years. And yet we're going to increase the staff significantly at this point in time. And I I'm really, really struggling with that because that just doesn't really completely make sense to me. The other thing that this budget doesn't seem to take into account is David Pyle and and who's, we're in the process of changing up the fee structure to try to recapture more of the fees. So we're going to increase taxes to cover these headcount. And then we're going to go and we're going to increase the fees to cover the headcount and other expenses. And that feels like double dipping on our residents. And I, I, I struggle with that. I don't think that's right. And I think that that is fiscally irresponsible of this council to do that. So I think that we really need to rethink that. I also struggle, the reason I pulled off the two items off of the consent agenda is I struggle that we're going to give different pay increases to our employees. We're going to give, what is it, 2% to our union employees and 3% to the non-union? And that doesn't seem fair either. And I, I, I think that's wrong. Thank you.
Okay, so anybody else? Okay, we have a motion. And we had a second, so who can, can you repeat the motion?
The council should approve the city manager's proposed adjustment to the city's 2021, 2022 biannual budget with the addition of if we hit 130 total FTEs, that the city manager would get approval from the council.
Okay, with that, we will, leader, will you do a roll?
Mayor Moran?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Mauchow?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember Odell, absent. Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
Nay.
Councilmember Treen?
Aye.
Five to one.
Just if there's anybody that's signed up to comment at the public hearing.
Okay. Okay, if you wish to provide comment, please raise your hand.
Did you open the public hearing, Madam Mayor? I didn't hear it, if you did.
Okay. If you wish to provide comment, please raise your hand. For attendees who are joining by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine.
Madam Mayor, you might want to repeat what you said. I don't think anybody heard you open the public hearing, so we're.
Oh, okay. I love this hammer, though. Okay, so I'm going to repeat it because I might have been crazy with my little mic here. So I'm opening up the public hearing. And this is for ordinance number 02021-536. And this is for the regular property tax, including for prior year's bank capacity and the allowable 1%. And we have gone, is there anybody who would like to speak to this?
Okay, I'm just going to repeat the instructions one more time. If you wish to provide a comment, please raise your hand by phone star nine. So nobody has raised their hand. So back to you, Mayor.
Okay, we have nobody who, from the public, who wanted to speak to this. Does our city manager want to speak to this?
Oh, just to reintroduce Aaron and his team to take us through the tax levy law and its impact.
Okay, we will do that and then I'll close the public hearing. Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And then we're back to Aaron.
So we should have the action coming up here. So the, there's this, included in the city manager's recommendation is the levy of the regular 1% plus the banked, remaining, remaining bank capacity. On a $950,000 home, that's going to be $57 per year is the estimate on that.
And Aaron, what's the remaining percent? I know I asked this last time, is it 5% or 6%?
So it'd be, so it was 10 years that the 1% wasn't taken. And then we took 5% in one, one half last year, so it's roughly 5%.
Okay, thanks. It would be a 6% increase this year.
No, it's, it's, the way it, go ahead. I'll have Chris give a further explanation.
Pam, this is Chris. We don't bank a percent each year. You bank a dollar amount. And the dollar amount was smaller in the early years. So if we take the remaining allowable bank capacity, it would be a 3.8% increase.
Okay, thanks. Because home values were up, right?
Plus the 1% that we are allowed to.
The 4.8.
Right.
Okay, so counsel, I will be looking for a motion one way or the other on this.
Move to approve setting the city's 22 property tax levy, taking the 1% and the banked capacity.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. And then I have a hand up for discussion, Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, Chris or Aaron, refresh my memory. The city, although it's 4.8% increase, that's the city's portion, of course, which is roughly 16%, is that 16% of the total property tax bill?
Yes, that's, that's about right.
So so you're taking really 16% of 4.8% increase and that's where you get the 57.
Yeah, it's $57, right?
Yeah, got it. Okay, no, that, that clarifies and makes sure we under, put it in perspective. It sounds awful on its face, but it's actually 16% of 4.8%. Okay, you got it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, any other? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, and I don't see any other discussion. Roll call, roll call, roll, please.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Mauchow?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
Nay.
Councilmember Treen?
Aye.
Five to one.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, the next thing up this evening is we need to go back to numbers nine and 10 that were taken off of consent agenda. And they are the resolutions adopting the city's salary schedule. And I'm going to, Pam, I'm going to leave you, since you pulled up, I'm going to leave that discussion. I'll let you start that.
Well, I'd like some explanation as to why we're giving different raises to different employees.
Councilmember Stewart, members of council, a memo was sent out providing a brief explanation by Deputy City Manager Scott McCall. But your labor group negotiated for a 2% increase with and for that going forward, not taking any risk that the, their, their cost of living could drop below that. So it's a guaranteed amount. The 3% is the same formula that the council adopted many years ago to grant themselves their raises by a particular formula. And for several years, we are told the staff, that this staff has been, that formula has been applied to giving all of the employees that rate of pay. That's why it was selected.
Is there anything preventing us from giving all of the employees the 3% using that formula?
You want to go back and negotiate or alter the labor agreement? Because you all negotiated that, our first labor agreement, earlier this year, then council could so direct us to do that. And we'd have to take that amount and roll it into the budget and and increase that expenditure proportionally. And then Aaron or Chris, do you have anything else that I may have missed there in providing that answer?
No, the only thing I would add is that the methodology is the four-year averaging of the CPIU June-to-June index. That's the, the method that council actually adopted by resolution when looking at that previously. So that's what's consistent with the, the other non-represented employees.
So I still think it's not fair. We, we, we played hardball to negotiate the, the labor union agreement down. And now we're giving employees different raises and that, that seems unfair because all of our employees are working really, really hard. And these are tough times.
Councilmember Ross?
Well, I agree that everybody works very hard with, in the city. And we're not, I don't think, from a pay standpoint, discriminating between the two groups. The, the labor negotiation included a lot of other benefits in addition to wage increases. And they chose to take a conservative guaranteed route versus a calculated route, which is equating to the 3%. So you can't have your cake and eat it too, have the higher of a calculated rate or a guaranteed rate unless we. unless we negotiated that into the contract. But that's where we are. I think guaranteed does have a discount. It's less risky to them getting that increase every year because they guarantee a 2%. 3% can be 1% some years. We don't know. It's the four year rolling average. And eventually that can go down or it can go up. We don't know that. But that's it's a selection of alternatives. Now, next time we do a labor negotiation, they choose the same formula. And we can negotiate in the right cost, total cost package for the union. Maybe we do go. But I don't think it's I think it's premature to say, hey, wait a minute. We negotiated this, but now you were conservative, and now we increase it. I I think that's just something that we deal with every new labor negotiation is update. And that if that's an issue, it becomes an issue for them. We can the city can negotiate that in good faith with the union.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, just to be clear for the public that the negotiations weren't one sided. It wasn't like the labor union came in with that. It was a negotiation between the council and the labor union. And we played hardball. And I think it, you know, now it's showing that that folks are not going to get enough of an increase to even cover inflation at this point. So that's unfortunate.
Councilmember Treen?
Madam Mayor, do we have to do these one at a time? Or can we make the motion to 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 should we do them one at a time?
You could do whatever you choose.
I think the city council should approve the 2022 salary schedules for nonrepresented employees of the city of Sammamish. And dang it. And for the what is it, the represented employees of the city that are a part of the union?
So you're looking at doing nine and 10?
Yeah, I'm looking at doing nine and 10, please.
Okay. Okay, so we have a first, and we have two seconds. So any other discussion? Okay, I'm not seeing any. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. All right. Now going on to unfinished business leads us to our development regs updates. And this is, I believe, David Pyle. Let's see if he's with us at quarter to 12.
Thank you, Mayor.
There he is.
And thank you, council, for your patience while I was being promoted to panelist. I was wondering if I was going to be saying, good morning, council.
I know, I was almost going to say that.
However, we're 15 minutes shy of that. So good evening, council. With us tonight, we on the topic of development regulations phase two, we have Jeff Arango from Framework Consultants, who is the lead consultant on this effort, and Evan Fisher, who is a senior management analyst with the Department of Community Development. We 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 do have a couple options for you tonight. One is we can continue with this topic if the council feels like you have the energy to take it on. The other option is is that we talked while while you were working through the budget and identified that we could forego this conversation if the council feels it would not be productive at this hour in favor of coming back on the 7th with a guarantee from the council that this would be held at the beginning of the meeting and would be given priority on the 7th. And then what that would do is enable us to have a conversation and a workshop. And then we would shift gears into opening the public hearing and continue the public hearing to the 14th to allow for extended public comment should anybody choose to want to provide comment during that timeframe. So we wanted to turn that over to you, Mayor, and see what the council thinks about that. But wanted to offer that up as an as an alternative to you.
I move we postpone this till the 7th.
Well, I will second that. Okay. And I'm looking for anybody who would be disagreeing with that. Hello, I don't hear anybody.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
I I also wanted to throw out there that we did send out some time ago, a few weeks ago, the the code package that was in the condensed form and the red line strike draft of what actually is changing in the regulations. And I wanted to invite any questions, you know, if you have any by email, to send them over to us. Also, if you I I did receive call from one council member and had a great conversation about the development regs phase two. If you want to give me a call or 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 ask by email to set up an appointment, I'd be more than happy to meet with any of you and talk about it on a different channel in anticipation of the December 7th meeting. And just make sure you have any questions answered that that you think you you might have in advance of that meeting.
Excellent. Okay, well, then I think that we will see you on the 7th with this. And I know I will be calling you for an appointment because I do have some questions.
Great. That'd be great. Yeah, thank you.
Can we? Excuse me, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can we vote on that motion?
Okay, so we need to make a motion to move this too. So we had we need a motion and a second to.
We already did. We just needed.
Pam was the motion.
And you seconded it.
Yeah, so. Okay, we need the formal votes. So all those in favor just say aye, so she has it for the record.
Aye.
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 Opposed? There was none.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Good job, Jeff.
Okay, she just needed it for the record. Okay, thank you. And thank you, guys, for getting that all ready for us. That's excellent. And we'll see you on the 7th.
No problem. Thank you, council. Appreciate it.
Okay, have a good night, short and night, and we'll spend good morning. Okay, so that takes us to council reports.
That's correct. And Scott will have a report on the reopening plan update. It'll be brief.
Thank you, Dave. This is Scott McCall, deputy city manager. And I will be brief, given the time of night. I just want to reiterate that one of the things that we are looking at is the community transit transmission rates. The community transmission rates, the last time we spoke with you in early September, were in the high category. As much as they've come down a little bit, they still remain in the high category. And we're about to go into the holiday season. So while we would like and are still anticipating being able to reopen, those community transmission rates that we are tracking are still trending in the wrong direction. On top of that, in the meantime, we have finalized the plan internally. We'll be sitting down with our union partners this week to go over the plan. So we hope to be ready as soon as the transmission rates drop low enough that we feel that it is safe for our employees and for the public, we will move towards reopening. I would anticipate that we would come to you before the end of the year with our best estimated timeframe about when that might happen. I think ideally, we'd love to be able to be open after the first of the year. I think that's a reasonable thing to aim for. I would also say that one of the nice things that's happening is that children ages five to 12 are now able to receive at least their first dose of the vaccine. But we have not gotten, you know, they haven't been able to get the second dose yet. So even for those that want, they have not had the opportunity to be fully vaccinated. So given that and the fact that we're now recommending a booster shot, even for those that have the first two shots, I think that for the safety of all of our residents and for the city staff, we'd like to be able to get a little farther down that path before we reopen the doors and and let the public back into city hall. So with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor for any quick questions we have.
Okay, Councilmember Ross?
And Scott, nice job managing this very volatile situation with the pandemic. One thing I would be helpful, we we are the leader with 95% plus vaccination rate, which is in the region. To help communicate in future updates, I think it'd be helpful to have a matrix of what other cities are doing, just so we're benchmarking in the region with, you know, are they open? What are they open for? Just gathering a matrix of data would be really a nice one one page slide to put in perspective what others are doing compared to what Sammamish is doing. And Sammamish may choose to be the leader for whatever reason. That's okay. But let's have that transparent discussion with that data be really nice.
Absolutely, we can do that. Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. Okay, the next thing on here is we've got discussion on canceling the December 21 regular meeting. Well, I didn't realize we had one scheduled that late in December. Okay. Councilmember Treen?
I'm in favor of canceling the December 21, 2021 regular meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll second that the week of Christmas. Councilmember Stewart?
As much as I want to, I kind of feel like we should do like we did last time and wait till we get a little bit closer as we as things start to stack up on our agenda. Because it's easier to cancel it than to cancel it and have to reschedule it.
Okay. Councilmember Gamblin?
Yeah, with people trying to make holiday plans, I support canceling it now.
How did you do? Okay, Councilmember Stewart?
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay.
Won't go down. My hand won't go down. There we go.
It's stuck. It's almost midnight. Okay, any other? Okay, so all those in favor of canceling the December 21 meeting, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so it looks like we'll be canceling the 21st meeting. The motion passes, and we do not have a late executive session. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Good night, folks.
Good night.